All right, I've asked Dave to take role for us tonight.
Joe Becker.
Here.
Peter Bussenbach.
Here.
Scott Gergen.
Here.
Lisa Dean.
Here.
Dave Pimble.
Here.
Russ Roloff, excused. Kelsey Waits.
Here.
Superintendent Collins.
Here.
All right. With that, let's jump to work. Could I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda? The most current one is on the table and in your Dropbox.
Would you approve the agenda?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just want to say at the end, I would like to close just for five minutes of principal negotiations update as we head into that negotiations here. And again, thank you for your patience. It is typical this time of year. Things are flying in and out of the agenda. That's very typical. So Deanna's been making changes rapidly in the last couple of days.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next, could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the April 25, 2018 regular board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve, same sign?
Pardon?
Oppose, same sign? Thank you. Motion carries. A motion to approve the bill is payable. Motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Superintendent's report. A few items tonight.
I don't know, Deanna, if you had time to get that up on the joint powers agreement and the changes.
If I need something else to work, I can do that.
Again, the veteran board members who have been in on the joint powers agreement, we've had some transition with joint powers over the last year and a half. Just to give a quick recap of it, we used to have within the joint powers agreement a lot of the parking rec programs, which included volleyball, included the softball league, which included some of the summer rec. What we decided to do about a year ago was separate that because in reality, the revenue and the expenses were both the same for each. And so we said, rather than doing this checks back and forth and keeping track of that, let's remove that. There was also at that time, two years ago, for many years, there was the adults with disabilities revenue that was coming in. And again, that was a program where we never, the school district received that money and we never spent more than what we had coming in. So again, we said that, you know, the school district will continue to operate that. So then it really came down to this joint powers agreement, which ties into most directly with the senior center and the fact that together the school district runs a senior center. And within that language, within the old language, even predating me, was part of this language up here that said that if you entered into capital improvement projects, it was 70%, 30%. And the reality was, we were never following that as a school district. And so not all of the things that we were doing as a school district were fitting underneath the joint powers agreement. And that's fine. So for example, when the high school was built and this used to store our lawnmowers and everything in this site, then there was a need for room for lawnmowers, trucks, all that type of equipment, salting, sanding equipment. So together we, and if people are wondering, what's Tim Collins pointing at, the joint maintenance of facility? Well, that was never under the 70, 30. That was under a 55, 45, I believe, and then we share some of the expenses. So after a lot of discussion over the last year and a half, we came down to this where we said, we're still going to agree to work together on projects, but we'll talk about what those parameters are if and when they come up. And so basically, both the funding of a program and then the ongoing maintenance will be just an agreement between the city and the school. So this was the core of what has changed within the last half year to nine months. And then you have an attachment and later on, you're going to have a resolution then to say that, yes, we as a school district are approving the changes in this language to the joint powers agreement. So this ties into a motion item later on, but I just wanted to show you as a board, a reflection of just the meat and potatoes of what's changing in that agreement. And the members who have been longstanding on that committee, they know that both the city and us were in agreement on these changes. It reflects more accurately what we're doing right now. The next, are there any further questions on that?
There's no effect to anything currently in place at all, right?
No, right. Restructuring of the district office positions, I thought we might have some of these action items maybe on this agenda. They're going to be coming in the June board meeting. But actually, it all started because of Jen, who's here. Jen is our most recent hire to replace Kim, and we're definitely really excited about it because of the experiences that she's had with us in our school district and the work ethic that she's been putting forth for many years now. If she needs to stay here until 6:30, she stays here until 6:30. And so she's coming in, starting to come in to see how Kim presents on some of these items. But what happened several years ago, as we've had people come and go out of the district office, we always did have two, what I would call lead positions underneath Kim that helped Kim run the business office. And at that time, it was payroll benefit supervisor and it was a finance supervisor. When one of those positions retired and resigned years ago, what we did then, because we knew that Kim was going to be retiring at some point, we went to Jen and asked if she would start doing both of those positions combined to a degree if we then reorganized a little bit underneath her in case we didn't have anybody to apply. Because school district finance, it is very difficult to find somebody with, you just can't come in with an accounting degree, I'm sorry. You've got to have the experience of special ed, you've got to have the experience of projecting enrollment, all the different funding. So at that time, Jen said, well, yeah, I'll gladly do two jobs at once so I get that experience. And then as people leave, I'll do their jobs too, or as they're sick, et cetera, I'll do their job, right? And I'll do that too. So what's going to happen now is now that Jen has been hired to replace Kim, I want to restructure it back to what it was. And that is having two people that are the lead directors. What will happen financially is it'll be a wash. Jen's job, when we made that transition, her job was upgraded to a 14. The other position at that time went to a 12. The person who sits in that position right now, which is a grade 12, she also at that time went down to six hours a week.
A day.
A day, yeah, a week. Wow, she's really good.
She's a hyper efficient.
She is really good.
We're thinking of giving her another hour.
That's the best hire I've ever made. So we approached her and she's willing to move to eight hours a day and go into that position. We'll open up the other lead position and then that will go down a grade from 14 to 13. So in the end, it'll be cash neutral in what we're doing. We'll get back to more of what would probably be a normal type business office. And so what that means then, in the next board meeting, you're going to see a lot of motions on motion to eliminate this position, which was her position, motions to eliminate other positions, and then restructure positions, and then we'll start opening it after that. So I just wanted to tell you, both from an organizational standpoint of what we're going to and from a cost standpoint, what we're going to, it's going to be cash neutral. If I tried to open up and keep Jen's position right now as is, we would get nobody to apply for it because of the dual role that she's been doing. So I just wanted to share that. Any questions?
So the new positions, are they, they'll be posted? Or do you have people internally who are going to?
We will post one and one individual. We are going to move to that position at eight hours.
Okay.
So, yeah, so the one position, and that will be the payroll benefits. Which one will we open up? That's going to be the?
Oh, the payroll benefits.
The payroll benefits supervisor is the one that we'll open. Middle school position, principal position and higher, you're going to see that, I didn't know for sure if I'd be talking about that or not. There's been a lot going on in the last two weeks on that, not only with our interview team that Lisa and Dave sat on, we had two rounds of interviews, but also site visits that we did. A little bit unusual to do a site visit for a principal, a little bit scary for those principals because usually you don't send out a team of four people to the sites. You do that for a superintendent search usually. Like when I applied here, they sent down a team of four or five people to Blue Earth area to find out what is, you know, Tim Collins like. And I told both of the principals that we went out to their sites that word's going to spread whether we come there physically or not because I'll start calling six to eight people from your school and then they're going to know. So we learned a lot from the site visits. The four middle school staff members that went out said it was really, really beneficial. The good news is they came, and what made it tough for our committee is both came back very positive. We were hoping to hear, ah, that one isn't quite as strong, but we heard a lot of good things. Justin Hahn was the one who led that with three of our middle school staff. I thought it was very important for them to be on the site visits and not me because, yes, I work closely with the lead principal, but Justin Hahn's going to be working very close with them. And I wanted the ownership also coming from them back to our group and not what is Tim Collins going to say. Because one of the things in group dynamics, if Tim Collins comes back and says it, I can control, I can control that because of what I can say from my position. So it was really good for our group to hear, wouldn't you agree? To hear back from them. And so it's now been announced, and you know that we've hired Steve, but I also know that this is being televised. And Steve Kovach comes to us from Albert Lee. He's been there for five years as the lead principal at Albert Lee. Prior to that, he was in the Lakeville School District system for over 20 years and had, as you read what I wrote, had a wide breadth of not only being a high school teacher, but also being an assistant middle school principal, and also being unique that he had a teaching and learning background for about three to four years. So came with a really diverse background and then has been the lead at Albert Lee as well. So we're definitely excited. We're going to introduce him to the staff tomorrow at a staff meeting. And then one of the things that's going to be a huge benefit to us as well is their school district is done already. They passed a bond and they have some major building projects coming up. So the previous week was their last week with students and staff. And why that's really, really going to be critical for us is it really allows us to have him start coming here. I mean, he still has to finish his job there, but it really allows us to start inviting him here to sit in on some of our meetings, a meeting with some of our staff already in June here. And that's going to really help with that transition as then July and August starts rolling around. I just want to let you know that what I tell him as a behind the scenes, I share with him that, you know, I think that whenever you transition to another job, there's some gratis that you're going to go there and go to a few meetings and you're not going to expect to get paid for that. Mark Zuzik's doing that right now at 917, and I know that Mark's, in fact, right now up at 917 at a negotiations committee. And Mark doesn't turn in hours for that, but I told Steve that if he comes here for eight hours and he's meeting with middle school principals, Tim Collins, Kim and Jen, Jen Reichel, that we will pay him on those couple of days and it will be reflected off of his contract. I want to let you know as board members, specifically in the principal's contract, it's very defined on how a person's hired, and I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. So there is no latitude for me to say, hey, Steve, I see you've been at Albert Lee for five years, you were at Lakeville for 10 years, I'm going to pay you right what Mark Zuzik was making. I don't have that latitude. And that can be a bad thing. Because if they're making already as much as what Mark is making, you know, are they going to come here? So we need to talk about that a little bit in our principal negotiations when we close the meeting a little bit. Because what I shared with him is the contract's very defined. It says that you'll make 95% of what, in this case, what Mark was making. And then after two years, we keep track of what that amount is, and as we give 1% or 2%, we keep track of that. And then two years from now, you make 97.5% of that. And then in year five, you make fully what that would have been. And part of the reason that we went to that originally was so that, let's say that you had transition of a principal position every three years, and you'd come here and I'd say, well, I've got to pay you $5,000 less than what I was paying the previous guy, and then you only stay three years. And then I hire Lisa, and I say, well, I've got to pay you $5,000 less than the previous person. You would really get out of a competitive level. And then also there's, then the other hand of it, you want equity amongst your own principals. You don't want to bring in somebody who isn't making more than other people who have been here five or six years in other lead positions. So we're going to talk about that just a little bit in our principal negotiations when we do close. So when you see that we're hiring, I did add then to hire Steve on this contract. I didn't know if I was going to be able to announce that because I just met with him Monday night from 4:00 to 6:00, but he did verbally accept the position. And of course, their district is waiting for us to sign him and approve him before they post it, so it's important that we do act on that. But we're, his contract will be following the principal's contract at that 95% and everything else that's in the contract, it follows that. So I just wanted to share that. Lisa and Dave, I don't know if you want to share anything about the interview process, anything that you want to share about the hiring of Steve? And I'm putting you on the spot because we didn't talk about this ahead of time, but anything that you want to share?
It's an intense activity. I think we spent nine hours the first day and a couple hours the last time. But it's an eye-opening situation and you learn the context of how this process evolves. You're starting with a big number, you weed that down, you bring down to a point where you actually have people to sit and interview. And it was pretty darn enlightening as to how the process evolved.
Yeah, what I want to say is, I mean, this was taken very seriously. This is a very important position in our district and the selection was taken very seriously. It was a diverse group around the table participating in the selection process with representatives of the middle school staff, both in core and allied arts curriculum areas. We had teaching and learning in the room and we had middle school, elementary and high school principals, administrators. And I think that reflected how seriously we took it and it also gave us multiple views on what the selection criteria and priorities were. It allowed some really robust conversation. And I was more than satisfied with Steve's qualifications. I think we've got a very strong candidate and I'm happy to hear that he was interested in us as well.
Yep. Yeah, so there was a totally, there was a 14 member, I was the member number 15 that interviewed. And, yeah, we did take it seriously and we had a lot of great applicants and we got a great candidate, so I was very happy he said yes. Short overview of the bond projects to this point. I know that several of the board members were able to be at the meeting on Tuesday and I know that Kim and Jen were here at that meeting as well. Jen was at that meeting as well. I was not at that meeting because I already had a Minnesota Liquid Asset Fund meeting, but it was the only day where the facility committee could meet with Scott McQueen and Wold. And so feel free to hop in at any point in time. But for the community, and I don't know how well the community can see this, but the really good news for us as a district, if you look at the award amount and you go out to the, I mainly focus in on the construction budget for right now. I believe that all the bids are coming in underneath and one or two of them are very close, so that's good news for us as a district. If you look at just the middle column, construction budget and project budget, when we had the numbers that we were going through back on the facility committee and all the binders of what all the projects would come to, the project budget is different from the construction budget in the fact that there's some costs in there that aren't part of the construction or what they're bidding. So for example, Wold's fees aren't in the construction budget. So that's a percentage that you have to add on that. They build in a little contingency to be safe. Well, I shouldn't say little, on some of the bigger projects, there's a big contingency. So if you look at that first line, there's a $900,000 difference between the construction budget and the project budget. So some of those other costs that I'm mentioning, when you do a parking lot, for example, you have to go to the city, you have to get permits, you have to get analysis, you might have to have soil borings done. Those are all some fees and costs that are outside of what the construction project it might be itself. So, and I'm just going to use just one of them, but it plays true for all of them. So our Hastings High School roof replacement, keep in mind that one of the reasons that that project budget that we saw in the paper was higher was at that time, we were requesting a four ply built-up roof. And that's the most expensive roof that there is, so that number reflects that. Instead, we as a committee and as a board, we said, hey, if you can give us a 30-year guaranteed roof, and it doesn't have to be that built-up roof, we're going to go with that. So on that project, there's a pretty big difference in savings. And part of it, keep in your mind, is due to the fact that it's not the built-up roof. But you, so right now, these numbers can change a little bit. But you can see that we have a, it's about a $2.6 million savings compared to, you know, what we were thinking. However, there's contingency built into that roof project. And so what happens if they get into that project and they run into some problems and they eat up all that contingency, then the savings isn't as much. Now, the reverse could be true as well. They might get in that project. So there's some numbers in here and the contingency is the main one that could change a little bit. But overall, very good news that the bid on these so far are coming in very competitive. And Wold would probably tell you that this one here is the one that really shocked them the most on the pneumatic control. And I don't know if they shared that with you at the facility committee meeting or not, but when you looked at those bids originally, there were, there was one or two companies that were up around $1 million on their bid. And they've worked with that company before that is getting the bid and they're very satisfied with that company. And when they see a discrepancy like that, where one or two of the other bids are at $980,000 or $1 million and that company's coming in at 678, they give them a call and say, are you sure about that number? Do you want to stick? And you deal with this, so you probably know that this happens as well in the construction. They get a call and are you going to still honor that number? And the answer is, yeah, we're going to stand behind it. So I think that the Hastings High School roof replacement, we all know quite a bit about that. It's a 30-year guaranteed warranty. The district wide camera project, we maybe inflated that a little bit more because we didn't quite know for sure what our principals, what Indiana would come back with as a recommendation, so we wanted to be safe there. I already talked about the pneumatic control at the high school, basically all the controls for the heating and ventilation, that one just came in and surprised Wold. The chillers at both the high school and Pinecrest, those are pretty straightforward. The multi-site exterior lighting replacement, pretty straightforward. A lot of that ties to parking lots. The McCullough parking lot bid, they put in the lighting replacement on that bid. So when you see the exterior lighting replacement, it's to do the lighting at our other sites, not only in the parking lots, but also on the buildings, so on the outdoor entrances, they replace that lighting as well. So that one's pretty straightforward. The high school and McCullough parking lots, those are pretty straightforward. Of course, with the high school, anybody who's gone up that main entrance road where there's potholes everywhere, that's part of the replacement too. It's not just that east parking lot, it's that main road so that we don't all have to have our cars realigned here in the near future. So that's part of that bid as well. And then the high school track resurfacing, that was the one that board members spent quite a bit of time with. I'm guessing I wasn't there, but to be educated on that. Because one is a base bid to tear up the, or to redo the track, correct? Then alternate number one is to really go down and just dig it, dig it all up. And then alternate number two was not only to dig it up and redo the track, but then to spray it with another adhesive. And part of our questions on that was, okay, if we go with that alternate and add it, does it add to the life expectancy? And the answer was, well, can't really say for sure, but for sure, you should do that six to seven years from now to, at least if there's any cracks at that time in the track surface, you spray it and it helps protect it for another few years. And then there was another alternate, which was, I didn't even quite understand this one, but it was almost double the cost of doing the entire track. It was like another $300,000 to $400,000 and it was to create?
Collegiate level.
A collegiate level, just a monster-based track with a collegiate level and a collegiate surface that I'm not sure it would make Tim Collins any faster. And the, right? And the life expectancy was maybe a little bit longer.
Not much.
But not much.
Not double? If you're going to pay double, shouldn't you get double?
And so what the facility committee, I think, because I wasn't there, but what I said, I told Scott McQueen that my vote was to go for the dig it up, the alternate one, and dig it up and do it right. And then that we would mark in our book six to seven years from now to do that adhesive spray coating then and not to do, and so I'm guessing by the nodding of your heads, that's where?
That was it. And with alternate one, it still came below our construction budget.
Yep.
So it was a pretty easy.
Pretty easy decision.
Easy decision, yeah. I'm really encouraged, you know, we're about 20% through our bidding and we're pretty low, below our budget.
I can't believe he's saying this out loud.
He did say, we've got a couple of things going in our favor. It's a soft construction market right now, this summer, it might change in six months. So we're taking advantage of that. And he did say too, because we are doing a year-round construction, we're not just doing summer construction, the school contractors who look at this stuff can fill in winter work. And so they want to fill in, you know?
Yeah, they want to have their crews running.
Right. So they're really.
We were more shovel-ready than other districts.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, I'm very encouraged by how this is going so far.
So for the community that's watching this, we're very thankful that it is coming in at that level and that's going to, hopefully, it continues. And hopefully, we don't have to dig into the contingency. And it will allow us then as a board to hopefully, a couple of years from now, talking about doing even further reinvestment and maintenance in our facilities, so.
The last thing he did say, because we have a three-year construction cycle, all their budgets are predicted at three years out, you know, with?
Inflationary growth and stuff, yeah.
So we're at the front end.
The front end.
Two to three years from now, it won't be as nice because the markups and the costs will have gone up two, three years from now.
Yeah. Well, that's a good point. It's a valid point. We're still happy.
Yes. So with that, that's the superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you. With that, we'll move into our action items tonight and we have quite a few, actually. I'm sorry. Oh, is Kim ahead of that?
Oh, is Kim ahead of that?
There's one action item before this.
Yeah, we can get to it. We'll get to this one first, and then Kim will roll.
Okay, so we'll do the action item one quick. Our first item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the district superintendent or another district representative with authority to legally bind the district to execute legal documents within his or her discretion on behalf of the district in its capacity as a member of TIES necessary to consummate the closing of the transaction and complete TIES dissolution. There was a resolution in the Dropbox. Could I get a motion in a second?
So, move.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just want to share that technically, you've already done this. You, at some point in the, usually in January, you do a motion authorizing myself and Kim to do this. But TIES, they don't know that all districts have that on the side. So, as they're now getting, they're looking to enter in to a different organization and agreement, they wanted it official, the same resolution from every member district signed into them, so that when it does come time to cut the deal. So, really, we're following their formality, even though you, as a board, have already given this to me. But now, I can have you approve this, I can have us sign it, and Indiana will send it to Ties, saying that yes, our board does give this official approval.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Just a thank you to Tim, because I know how involved you've been in this process and how well you've represented not only the district, but our taxpayers. I've really appreciated that. So, thank you for diving in
Absolutely.
And having the courage to speak up at times.
Thank you very much.
Very valid point. Very valid point. Anything else? Okay. This is a roll call vote. Would you assist again, Dave?
Joel Becker?
Yes.
Peter Blissblock?
Yes.
Scott Gergen?
Yes.
Lisa Dean?
Yes.
Dave Pimble?
Yes.
Russ Roloff?
Kelsey Waits?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Our next action item is a motion to approve the 2018-19 adopted budget. Do you want us to make the motion a second first or after?
Probably after.
Okay. So, we'll have Kim give us a
Okay. So, this is the adopted budget for the next school year, which you have to approve prior to July 1st for us to continue making payments, payroll, finance, everything else. What?
Give us the whole
Just a little bit.
Can you make it a
Make it bigger.
Go to 100% on the
Click on that, Kim.
Right. Keep going.
On what? Click on that, the two arrows.
The split arrow there.
Okay. So, because we have to do it so early, it's kind of ahead of time of us knowing all the information. So, we, the adopted budget is with the information that we know at this point in time. And this is also compared back to the final 1718 revised budget that you approved, just like a month ago. So, in this budget for pupil units, the pupil units are 4,818. This number comes from the five-year projections that we did last October. So, this coming October, once the students are all in the buildings, we will do another projection of the student numbers. So, this could change for the revised budget. Okay, so the revenue changes from 1718 to this budget is, the general ed formula increased 2%, and we already knew that because it was from the past legislation. So, the amount of our general ed aid in 1819 is 6,312 per adjusted pupil units. And then, the other thing that increased from last year to the referendums is, our referendums have an inflation, so there's an increase on that. And because our student numbers are staying pretty much level from 1718 to 1819, we see for the first time, a real increase on that. And then, there was the $300 increase that was voted on in November. So, the total increase of revenue from the last 1718 to now was 1.8 million. The majority of that is the 300 increase. State special ed aid, the formula increased, so there's an increase of 359,794, so what's actually in this budget is 5.5 million. But as you know, special ed aid, it's like every other month, we're getting, it goes like this
Yeah.
When we get the reports from the state. But this is what we have in there for now.
This is what we know right now.
Time the revised ones come, it might be different. It will never be higher than this, because there is a cap on it.
Okay.
So, the total change to the revenue budget was 2.2 million. Okay, so the expenditure budget, there was a total increase of 487,452. So, within that amount, it was, the teacher's contract is per settlement. This contract, or this budget also includes the savings from eight retirements. If you look back at the five-year projection, we didn't have any retirements in there. We didn't know how many were going to retire. This one, we knew at this time that there was eight that was retiring. And so, it's 290.7 FTE for teachers. All the other contracts, the amount in this budget is our negotiated estimates. And some of those you are approving tonight, and the estimate is what the actual ended up being.
Okay.
And then, some of the other finance expenditures is the transportation contract. We have a two-year contract. This is the second year. So, we did the increase by that. It was 80,000. We have some restricted programs, and when they lose revenue, then the expenditures fall into the unassigned, and it increases unassigned expenditures.
Can you give an example?
Could you say that one more time?
Okay, so, if you have restricted revenue, there's only so much revenue that comes in. And then, if that revenue goes down, you still have the same expenditures. So, then, that increase
Then the difference has to be covered.
Is going to fall down to the unassigned.
Okay.
I honestly can't tell you
That's fine.
At this point, what they were.
That's fine. We'll follow tomorrow.
But it came to 98. Oh, I know what part, I know what, no, that's on the next budget. I can tell you later
Yep.
When I look. And then miscellaneous programs came to about 2,000. So, there was a total increase of 669,271 of expenditures. So, the net change in the budget was an increase of 1.5 million. And then, we always talk unassigned fund balances, we always talk about the yellow line. So, this is just a little bit of the history of the unassigned fund balance. In 1617, it ended at a balance of 13 million. The projected ending fund balance for this current year is 11 million. And then, the projected ending fund balance for this adopted budget goes up to 12 million. And that pretty much goes back to the increase in the referendum. Okay, and these, whoops, these are some of the updates that will happen for the revised budget. And even though we pretty much have the revised budget completed like October, then we go into the five-year projections right away. So, you'll kind of know where we're sitting, but it won't actually come to the board till December with the truth in taxation. But there could be staffing changes due to student numbers or the boundary changes. The other contracts, the final negotiated amounts, though I don't see a whole lot of change in that, because they're kind of coming into what was estimated. When we have people retire, then we put in an estimated budget for the new hire. So, in the revised budget, you will have what the actual salaries are compared to the estimates. We're comp and liability, property and liability. You are going to approve that now, tonight, but we didn't have it in time to put it in this budget, and it is a small decrease, so we're not going to see an increase in that. And then, every two years, we have to do this GASB OPEP pension and accumulated sick leave study. And so, this is the year that we have to do it. But the problem is, the study never gets completed till like December of January, or January. So, the budget in here is the old budget, and it could increase or decrease. So, it could make your, you're going to have a variance one way or the other at the end of the year.
Can you just share with new board members again, the GASB OPEP pension, what that means in layman terms?
So, there's, in the contracts, there's retiree health. And so, we have a, we have an OPEP fund. And the study tells us how many, much dollars we have to put into this fund every year to be able to pay out what's owed. And those dollars come from the unassigned general fund. Right now, I think that we pay about, it's right around, I think, 1 million on the general fund. And then, Fund 2 and Fund 4, food service and community, they pay their own. And then, the pension and accumulated sick leave, it's the severance side of retirees. And we have that in a committed fund. And when they do the study for us, they do the same thing. They tell us by that study, how much we have to put in that committed fund to pay what we owe in the future. And that also reduces the unassigned general fund dollars. So, it is a cost to the district, even though it's then paid out of these funds when they're paid.
Yeah.
How wide of a swing could it be?
I think the last time it went up, and I think it was like about 200, I want to say 200 to 300,000. But the last time, they, it's called a new GASB now, I can't even tell you the numbers, and they changed all the rules and the formula they used. So, I think that's part of why there was such an increase. I don't see it to be that much of an increase next time.
I don't either.
Okay, and the revised budget, if there's any legislative changes to revenues or expenditures, we'll see those in the revised budget. And then, by the time we do the revised budget, we have the audit completed for the 1718. So, we always look at the variances in there, and then go back and look at the expenditures to see if we want to make a different projection in something. So, you'll see those in the revised budget. So, then, this one, I think I'm going to have to because really, what we always look at is this yellow line, because this is the unassigned, this is really the only area that we can control. All of the reserved above, they're like self-funded accounts. You get specific revenue for specific expenses, and you just make sure that your expenses don't exceed your revenue in those. So, the unassigned is basically, it's all our operating, it's all the staff hired, it's your electricity, it's your main, the main expenses of the district. so this number here, the 416,741, that means that we have 416,741 more in revenues than expenditure for this year. And if you look back at the five-year projection, that number was like 225. But in that one, we had no retirees estimated. And we had our health insurance at, I think, 2%, and it ended up being zero. So, that, this is, it's actually pretty close to that. And then, right underneath here is, I compare it to, this is the 1718 revised number two budget, and we were overspending by 1.135, 1.1 million. And then, so if you take the underspending of, the overspending of 1.1 million, and then the revenue exceeds expenditures of 416, it comes to the 1.5 million that ties back to that first page. That's just a way to tie it out. But again, going from a negative 1.1 million to a positive 416, it was the 300 increase in the referendum. That's just bottom line.
Yeah.
And so, then farther back in the packet, there's more detail that you can look at. So, unless you have any questions on anything, we just ask you to pass it, so we can get paid. Nothing?
No, I'm just glancing at the food service and community service fund and stuff, but
those look
Okay.
Very little
Yeah.
Change.
Right.
And just to remind the public, these budget reports are on the district webpage.
Yeah.
So, you just, go on the district webpage, you go under departments, finance, budgets, if anybody wants to spend some more detailed time with them, including historic ones. So, it's all there for you. Get back to my agenda here. So, with that, I would accept a motion in a second to approve the 2018-2019 adopted budget.
So, move.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our third action item tonight is a motion to approve the following insurance rates for 2018-2019. I'm not going to read those out. Those are available in the agenda for both property liability, workers' comp, and agency fee. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our next action item is a motion to approve the school breakfast, lunch, milk prices for the 2018-2019 school year. Could I get a motion in a second?
So, move.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This would be a good point to just
Yeah, I just want to share with board members, and I shared it at a work session, that typically we, if they hadn't done a waiver, we'd have to increase these by 10 cents every year for the next several years. So, we're very happy that we do have a budget reserve, which allows us to be able to apply the waiver. It might only be a one-year waiver, but the good news is, we can keep our lunches at the same price for the 2018-19 school year. And I know that that's always important to you as board members, to keep it as low as possible, so.
And that's a waiver from the federal government
Yeah.
Because we do receive subsidies on free and reduced lunches.
Yeah.
So, the waiver is that we can stay where we are, we don't have to make adjustments relative to accepting those dollars. Is there any discussion to not changing the milk, lunch, and breakfast prices? No?
Nice to see you.
It is. It's just heartbreaking to have to vote for that. I mean, the increases that have been mandated the last few years, but it's happy to have a year where we don't need to do that. All those in favor of the motion on the table?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to approve, one, two, three, four, five, six bids. Again, these are detailed out in the agenda. It's available both online and hard copy here. So, I'm not going to read them out loud. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? The bids that are out there, multi-site exterior lighting, the camera project, the building automation replacement, high school and Pinecrest chiller replacement, high school track resurfacing, and the high school and McCullough elementary parking improvements.
Tim, does it, next couple of months, does it continue at this pace, the bidding, or is it slowing down?
It should slow down now a little bit. But what'll now start picking up is, I think there's already a meeting next week on the high school roof.
Oh, now, now you have to start managing it.
Right. Start managing that. As you know, they're going to start now meeting on Todd Field pretty soon here in June, July, and August, as we start bringing in user groups and Trent Hansen. But yeah, the bidding should really slow down a lot now until next fall.
And we're about 20% of the way through the bidding?
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Last track. Do we have a motion in a second, Deanna?
Yes, we do.
All right. Terrific. Thank you. I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our sixth action item tonight is a motion to approve a resolution approving intermediate school district 917's long-term facility maintenance program budget and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of these projects in our district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I had a question, you know, looking at the projected year by year by year, some year, like 2022 or whatever, there's a large amount budgeted?
For like, for the facility maintenance at 917?
Yeah. So ours, right now, it's fairly inexpensive for this year, like maybe $6,000 or $5,000. So when that happens, how do we, where does that money come from, District 200?
I don't know legally, Kim, if we can take some of our own to pay for that, or is it just the straight-out levy?
I'm not sure which page you looked at, but like, for next year's, it shows what our percent is of the total, which is about 7%. So the other totals that you're looking at, you would probably, we're only levying about 7% of that total.
It is?
It's the same as ours. Like, after so many years, they need roofs on their building.
Where is it? 2022, there's a roof?
Yeah.
It's a local levy, so it would be, it would be attributed then to our, our local levy. Just like, this replicates our same long-term facility maintenance levy that we place on, so it would come from that as well. And if you vote no on it, Mark Zuzik now would be the one that would, I mean, we should maybe vote no just to give him a little angst, because he'll be the superintendent of 917 now. But again, yeah, the formula is our percentage of students in 917 and moving forward with that.
Okay. So roll call vote. Would you help, Dave?
Absolutely. Joe Becker?
Yes.
Peter Blissbach?
Yes.
Scott Gergen?
Yes.
Lisa Hadeen?
Yes.
Dave Pembel, yes. Russ Roloff?
Kelsey Waits?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Our seventh action item tonight is a motion to approve the revised joint maintenance agreement between Independent School District 200, Hastings Public Schools, and the City of Hastings. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our eighth action item tonight is a motion to approve the 2018-20 to 2020 contracts for the following employee groups. And these are all inside of Independent School District 200, health service professionals, paraprofessional technology support, and individual business office contracts. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
Thank you.
And all these, all these contracts are the same. They're all falling with rate on that same percentage of what we settled with the teachers. That's the offer that we made to all of them. There's been just some minor changes in language items that don't impact pay. They add procedures and, they impact procedures and process. So, and again, I want to let you know as board members that all these groups were extremely thankful and wanted me to express that to you as a school board, of how appreciative they are of your generous offer. When they know that our budget this year, even though the levy helped us out, it's going backwards a million dollars. So they really, they thanked you for your generosity.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item nine, a motion to approve the employment of the following, a big, long list. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item 10, a motion to approve the resignation of a not-quite-as-long-illust. Could I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our 11th action item is a motion to approve the termination of Georgie Majewski effective 5/8/18. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'd like to ask for a motion to table action item 12. A motion in a second to table that.
So moved to table action item number 12.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Side.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That's something I would have taken up at a further, future board meeting, and all the changes, I think, we'll get caught. Action item 13, a motion to approve three retirements. Jan Hansen, Peg Roether, and Janet Zuzik. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just, thank you.
Wow.
It's a lot of years.
Yeah. Absolutely. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item 14, a motion to approve leaves for four individuals. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Didn't ask for discussion, sorry. Action item 15, a motion to approve two increases in FTE for the 2018-2019 school year. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just want to share that Colleen at Tilden is in the preschool program, and it's due to the fact that we're now offering an all-day program, and our, good news, our numbers have increased. So then that means an increased FTE. And the other is, I believe, a reflection of an increase in special services.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our next action item is a, number 16, is a motion to approve the following change in assignment. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have some other business, just a solid number of upcoming events. The ELL picnic, I think they've asked for a RSVP on that. So look back into your emails and respond accordingly. It's on the 4th of June. And we, our next work session, which will be here on the 6th of June, starting at 6:00. Middle school graduation is Thursday morning in the middle school gym. Get here early for a parking spot, or I will tell you, you can park over on Lineway, but I'm just saying, don't take my spot. I'll be the red van. That's on the 7th, the morning of the 7th. It's usually about 90 minutes.
Get here early.
Yeah.
You can walk from the house.
Yes, you can park at Dave's and walk from there. That's another alternative. But that's about an hour and a half. Is that about that?
Yep, hour and a half, yep.
Something like that. And that's indoors. It's held in the middle school gym. Friday evening, June 8th, be the high school graduation outdoors, hopefully.
And all of you can help me make that decision on Wednesday, June 6th.
Yeah, we'll sort it out.
And I'll say, hey, the board said.
Just so new board members are aware, that actually really starts for us at about 6:15 to meet over, to meet somewhere.
At the appropriate location.
At the appropriate location prior to the event, to sort of strategize the logistics of the event, yeah.
If graduation's at the high school, we meet in Mike Johnson's conference room at around 6:15. And if it's outdoors, we meet at the church right up above Todd Field there, so.
Maybe at 6:00, because there's a little walk involved with that one.
Yep. But you'll get more information on that as we, as we get closer.
Yep. And then our next regular board meeting, which will be held here, is Wednesday, June 20th.
And then we just need to have a motion then to adjourn for principal update negotiations.
Yeah. Could I get a motion in a sec? I'm sorry.
Just one more thing. Monday, this past Monday night was the awards and scholarship at the high school. And the number just blew me away. That, over, just over $159,000 that local businesses and local organizations gave to our high school seniors. It just is absolutely amazing. And some of these organizations have been doing this for 30-plus years and have reached the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that they've donated. So just a huge thank you to our community, because this does not happen everywhere.
Very good point. Very good point. With that, could I get a motion in a second to close the meeting for principal negotiation discussion?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.